I would like to call this village board meeting of Thursday, February 2025 to order. Will the clerk? Please state the.
President Koker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmitz absent. Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Maritato?
Here.
Trustee Pojak?
Here.
Here.
Trustee Schroder?
Here.
We're all here.
Please stand and join me in saying Glendale Polities.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Positions and communications. Trustee Siddiqui. The next coffee and chat with the village president and the board will be Saturday, March 1st, at Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend or have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at 630-909-5302 or contact your district trustee. The Glendale Heights Police Department aims to be cool for the annual Polar Plunge from March 7th, starting at 3:00 p.m. until March 8th at 3:00 p.m. Support our officers in the Polar Plunge as they raise funds for the Special Olympics Illinois. In order to donate, please visit the village website at www.glandalehighs.org. Office Perk and Shehan are both participating in the Super Plunge, while 15 other officers are completing one-time plunges. If you have any questions or if you would like to make a donation, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070.
Trustee Light?
Thank you. Spring is right around the corner, so register by Sunday, March 9th for Spring Outdoor Soccer. Regular season runs from April 12th through June 7th with five different grade levels. For more information or to register for Spring Outdoor Soccer, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. Hey, better, better. Register by Tuesday, March 4th for Glendale Heights Youth Baseball and Softball. We are offering six different leagues ranging from My First T-Ball to Pony Leagues. Practices begin early April as weather allows. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. Thank you.
Trustee Maritato.
Registered today for Mother-Son Dance. Be ready to have the time of your life at our Winter Wonderland themed dance. Enjoy an activity-filled evening, complete with dinner and dessert. The Mother-Son Dance will be Friday, February 21st from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the Glendale Heights Golf Club. The registration fee is $75 for residents, $85 for non-residents, and $35 for each additional child. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. Dance the night away at the annual Daddy-Daughter Dance on Saturday, February 22nd from 6:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the Glendale Heights Golf Club. We will be celebrating a winter wonderland for this year's theme. The evening will include dancing, dinner. Every participant will receive a souvenir to remember the night. The registration fee is $75 for residents, $85 for non-residents, and $35 for each additional child. For more information, call the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060.
Trustee Pojak?
The police department would like to remind residents of the parking regulations within the village during snowfall. There is no parking allowed on village streets designated as a snow route for 24 hours or after a snowfall of one inch or more. There is no parking allowed on any village street for 24 hours after a snowfall of two inches or more. And there is no parking allowed on any village street for 72 hours after a snowfall of five inches or more. If you have any questions regarding winter parking restrictions, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070.
Trustee Schroder?
Senior citizens aged 65 or better are encouraged to apply for the Senior Citizen Utility Tax Rebate Program. Qualifying applicants will receive a $75 rebate check as part of this program if they meet the following guidelines. They must be age 65 or better, honor before December 31st, 2024, or have a spouse who is age 65. They must have lived in Glendale Heights for all of 2024 as either an owner or a renter. They must have earned no more than $45,000 of gross income during 2024, and have utilities billed and paid in their name. Applications are now being accepted now through April 30th. If you have any questions, please contact the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens at 630-260-6050, or the Finance Department at 630-260-6000. Thank you.
Police Cadet Program, Chief Peppers.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Village Board, for letting me introduce a new program at our police department.
Cadets, stand up. Cadets, left face. Cadets, follow.
As you all know, recruitment and retention in all facets of employment have been difficult for the last few years. This includes the law enforcement careers as well. At the police department, we offer Junior Police Academy for those that are at 5th grade through 8th grade in the summertime. We also have the Adult Citizen Police Academy, which runs in the fall. In addition, we facilitate a college internship program for which we have hired four officers. Where we have failed is our young adults aged 16 to 20 years. In January, we began our police cadet program. The goal of our cadet program is to prepare young adults from our community between the age of 16 and 20 to get the training, hands-on experience, mentorship, and leadership needed to eventually become police officers at our Glendale Heights Police Department. Our police cadets were recruited through collaboration with the high school counselors and our school resource officers. They work eight hours a week through the school year, and they will eventually work 40 hours in the summer. Our grants coordinator, Jasjeet Sanghau, obtained grant funding to allow us to have six cadets in our program. These police cadets work very hard, and they'll study every facet of law enforcement. You'll eventually see them at our community events. The critical part of this program is our instructors. They provide leadership, guidance, mentoring for our cadets to promote professional growth and inspire personal development. There are at least two instructors at each lesson to help develop the skills and knowledge for these police cadets. This team includes Cadet Coordinator Jorge Munoz, Intern Coordinator Tasha Politis, School Resource Officer Paul Jimenez, Officer Zach Pugh, Community Service Officer Mike Merritt, and School Resource Officer Ryan Sheen. With that said, I would like to introduce the members of our new police cadet program. We have Brianna Capter, Logan Vance, Pedro Espinoza, Brandon Ellis, and Wyatt Chambers. We are happy to add these new members to our police family and look forward to seeing their growth and success.
Cadets, right face. Cadets, follow.
Thank you, guys.
Are they going to work, George? Are they off to work now? I mean, is that what they're doing? They're off to work?
Now they have to do traffic detail. I'm kidding.
Thank you, Chief Peppers, and thank you, Police Department, for a wonderful job. Okay, next, Public Discussion. Public Discussion of Agenda Items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item only? Anyone from public? Public is silent, so means we are doing good, right? Okay, next, you have the consent agenda before you. Word acting Village Administrator, Don Flint, please read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of February 6th, 2025. Two, approval of the committee to hold meeting minutes of February 6th, 2025. Three, approval of the accounts payable listing of February 20th, 2025, amount of $2,347,866.65. Four, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of an agreement between the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois and Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for the furnishing of professional construction observation services for the CDBG Cambridge Lane and Westchester Drive Water Main Replacement Project. Five, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of a grant between the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency and the Village of Glendale Heights for the Armitage Creek Reaches 13 and 14 Stream Restoration Project. Six, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of Professional Auditing Services Agreement by and between Crow LLP and the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Seven, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of the Fourth Amendment to the Cloud Data Storage Services Agreement between Central Square, formerly known as Sun Guard Public Sector LLC, and the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Eight, a resolution authorizing the execution of the Second Amendment to the contract with Unumas Landscaping Incorporated for additional mowing and landscaping services in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Nine is approval of consent.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, Trustee Light?
Motion is approved, the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Trustee Siddiqui, second. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Old business, there is none. New business. One, a motion to waive first reading on new business item number two through five. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business item number two, five? Trustee Light?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business item number two to five is approved. Number two, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement for participation in the LNI Public Works Mutual Aid Network, first reading is waived. This is ordinance 2025-2025-4. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-4?
So moved.
Trustee Schroder and Trustee Siddiqui, second. Discussion.
I think that was opposite.
None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2025-4 is approved. Number three, an ordinance waiving bait authorizing the issuance of notice of awards and authorizing the execution of a contract with Tam Mechanical Industries Incorporated for the wastewater treatment plant screen building lower-level plumbing replacement project, first reading is waived. This is ordinance 2025-5. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-5? Hello, Trustee Light?
So moved.
Trustee Maritato, second. Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2025-5 is approved. Number four, an ordinance authorizing the sale of surplus personal property owned by the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI, one 2,009 Ford F450 cab and chases with Pro. First reading is waived. This is ordinance 2025-6. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-6? Trustee Maritato and Trustee Light, second. Discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2025-6 is approved. Number five, an ordinance comment chapter eight entitled Traffic Schedule of Title VII entitled Motor Vehicle and Traffic of the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI, Installation of Stop Signs to Make the Intersection of Aspen Lane and North Brandon Drive at Four Way Stop Intersection. First reading is waived. This is ordinance 2025-07. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-07? Trustee Light?
So moved.
Trustee Maritato?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2025-7 is approved. Number six, an ordinance to approve and authorizing a fence variation for 1924, present state in the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI, on the February 6th, 2025, COW. This is first reading. Number seven.
Wait.
It's the first reading.
Number seven, an ordinance rezoning the property commonly known as 44 West North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI, pin 02-36-302-005, from the February 6th, 2025, COW. This is first reading. Gee, Public Discussion of Agenda Items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item only? Anyone from public? Why this public is silent, you know? Next, adjunct session, there is none. Adjourned, made. I need motion to adjourn. Trustee Light?
Motion to adjourn.
Trustee Maritato?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Siddiqui, Mr. Siddiqui, you have the committee.
I would like to call this committee of the whole meeting of Thursday, February 28th, 2025 to order. Will the clerk please note who is present?
Noted.
Does anyone have any additions or deletions? I have one. Snow removal. Okay, committee reports. Glendale Lake Golf Club Committee?
No report.
Historical Committee?
Oh, you bet I do.
Yeah, you do.
All right. I'm having so much fun with this historical committee. There's so much. It's a lot to learn. I had a small presentation I wanted to do. I wrote this up because I thought it'd be a fun, entertaining thing. Once upon a time, actually, it was a few Saturdays ago, one early morning, a group of historians entered the front door of an old house that had rumors of great treasures and hidden secrets inside. As the historians entered the house, they noticed creaky floors and small issues. So they kept wandering through the house to the kitchen, where they found a door. Easy to find. It was right there. They opened that door, and they started to descend along a long tunnel. All right, so they were stairs. Either way, after getting to the end of that tunnel, they hit the electric torch, and at the bottom of the tunnel, we came upon vast treasures of Glendale Heights history. These are some of the photographs that we're playing now with some of the stuff that we found on there. And this is just a small sample of the items. We just started touching in the middle of it. That's a lightning rod from the barn that burned down a while ago. That was from the golf course, the original ribbon-cutting plaque. Some of the softball and baseball history that we had, I think that was 1961 that paper. Or no, it's 67 that paper was put out. Some of the items that we had, some of the police equipment that we had, and some of the ads from, like, Clubside Inn that some people remember growing up here. But Raskin Park, that was a neat piece of history that we had started to uncover. There's so much more down there. Breathalyzer. We wanted to try it out, but nobody wanted to blow on the end of the tube, so. That's some of the dispatch equipment that we have. We'll put this stuff on display, slowly work it in and out of the rotation of stuff that we have. And these are the items that have been donated throughout the years. Those are a bunch of records that we have for the phonographs upstairs. Some of the stuff fits the era of the home, but some of the stuff can be used in the museum portion. So if you have donations, this is what we're doing. We're inventorying and putting stuff together. And I'm gonna geek out on this stuff for a long time to come, so I'll bring back more fun stuff to talk about. I just, that's all I have for a report, but thank you.
Great. Have you ever tried writing horror movie scripts?
No. No, no, no.
It's really nice. The way you started, it seems like, you know, I'm gonna find some, something in the basement.
Yeah, yeah. No cobwebs, that's for sure. They cleaned it out before I got down there, but it screamed all the way out.
Great, okay. Ordinance Committee?
No count. No report.
Okay, Parks and Recreation Committee?
No report.
Property Enhancement? Well, he's not here, so. Senior Citizens Advisory Committee?
No report.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on a committee recommendations only? Okay, so now comes to other. I have one about snow removal. So I wanna bring this thing that I saw a post on a social media about Bevs, Peppers, us thanking another senior that, you know, she removed the snow on the sidewalk. And then I also saw some seniors are asking if, you know, we can get some help from the village. So I just wanna know if we can gather something, like, how much does it cost? And what kind of funding we can get for that if we are going to do it for the seniors? And if we can get any grant or any donations from the businesses or something like that?
I can certainly have staff look into that.
Yeah.
It's not something we've looked into in the past, but I can certainly see if there's something out there. As far as I know, there's not. I know a lot of communities try to get volunteer organizations. To do that, we can also reach out to the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. We've had a couple of the groups come out and assist families in the fall to do that kind of stuff, but honestly, we haven't really looked into that. I can certainly take a look and see what I can find out.
Yeah, if we can find out, like, because, you know, usually it's two, three times, you know, if we are going to remove the snow, especially for the seniors who need help. So how much does it cost? How much money we are looking at it? And what can we do about? So just a data gathering.
So a senior driveway program would be different than a sidewalk program. Right? So looking at the seniors who have single-family homes who need help getting snow removed from their driveway would be different than the sidewalk, right? Going to school, to and from school, that kind of stuff?
Yeah.
So I think, Keith, you can look into two different
Yeah.
programs, and then the cost of driveway removal versus?
Yeah, just data gathering. Just wanna know.
Sure.
Mr. Maritato?
We do have a list at the seniors center for guys that pile snow.
Correct.
Hand help the seniors. So we do have a list at the seniors center.
And that's a volunteer list of stuff that's been put together. So I mean, we can cert-- but that list is not an extensive list by any means. So if we're gonna try and do it for all seniors, let me get some numbers and get that information.
Okay, thank you. Okay, public comment. I have Margaret Langgraf.
Hello, everyone. I'm Margaret Langgraf. I live at 1451, President.
Can you speak in the mic, please? You can pull it a little, you know?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
There. It's been a while. I addressed the board 20 years ago about the feral cat population. Mary, you were there. Chester, Pat, and you still call me the Cat Lady. Anyway, I live at 1451, and there are two issues I'd like to talk about today. The first one is credit card fees. The world is experiencing a difficult time with the 3.5% credit card fees on charges. Everywhere we go, they ask for a surcharge. Even restaurants are doing it. They're charging you more if you use a credit card. All the utility bills, if you use your debit card, they don't charge you, but if you use a credit card, they charge you extra. Now, I listened to Bill's budget presentation, and every department he went through had an increase in credit card fees from last year to this year. It's getting out of control. I work at a law firm, and even the lawyers that are charging $650 an hour are passing on credit card fees to the clients that charge. One of the items that caught my attention was $40,000 increase in credit card fees. I don't know if I heard you wrong, but that was just in one area. So I auto-pay my water bill every month with a credit card because I get cash back, and there's no fee on it. So I calculated that 3.5% of just my water bill is $60 a year to the village, which is more than the cost of my vehicle stickers. So I would really like you to look into a system that charges a fee if people choose to use their credit card versus an automatic debit. Because I don't know what the total dollar is, Bill, but it's gotta be a lot. And we could really use that money to hire someone to automate our processes more. And even your credit card payment system for the water bill is a little cumbersome, and it's old. It's been there for a long time, and it's cost me time trying to enter my auto-pay. I've been missing payments because one of my credit cards was expired. And I went in and fixed it, and then I ended up paying three months of my water bill at once, and then it charged me again. So it's just been kind of crazy. But I see an opportunity for the village to save a lot of money by looking at a payment portal that will request, "Well, if you use your credit card, you're gonna pay an additional 3% or whatever." Okay, now the second.
So you are proposing a debit directly from the bank instead of being through the credit card?
Yes, a debit would be free.
Yeah.
Even the Secretary of State, they
Yes.
they charge you if you use a credit card, everywhere. Like, today I went to a restaurant, and they said, "Discount for Cash."
Even our property bills, you know, that's
Yes.
Yeah, that's a huge one.
Everything. And I wouldn't suggest that you say no credit card payments because some people might need to use a credit card, but it would deter people like me who, I don't really need to use a credit card, but I get money when I use a credit card, so. don't really need to use a credit card, but I get money when I use a credit card, so.
So Bill, our new software, do we have that, um, direct?
So actually, just so everyone understands, the current system, the antiquated system, does allow for payments from your bank account directly, and there are probably two or three hundred people that have signed up for that. You might appreciate the fact that sometimes people are apprehensive about the village knowing that kind of information, so we don't have a huge number of people that have signed up for it, but we have some. And with the new system that we expect to roll out, we're rolling out the financial system May one, and we expect to roll out the utility billing system October one, and it will have multiple and easier payment options.
Excellent. Could you look into having a deterrent from using the credit card, like a fee, or give a discount if you put debit information in, because I've seen that too. Like T-Mobile, I know they charge you ten dollars less a month if you use debit.
We can sort of look at all the options.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And my, my second item, um, it's hard to come up here without requesting a street light. I have, there's a resident in District Two that pointed out that Armitage, Armitage is a very.
Your time is, is up. I will let you, yeah, go ahead and do it quickly.
Okay, Armitage is very dark, um, the streetlights are spaced, like almost, almost a city block apart, whereas on President, they're five houses apart. And I'm just wondering if somebody could look into perhaps putting a couple streetlights in the middle of the block, um, because it's very dark.
Between President and Bloomingdale?
No, Armitage and the whole.
I know, but between?
Oh, yes, yes, between President and Bloomingdale Road.
Bloomingdale, around Armitage.
Yes, yes, that, that's all.
Is there a specific spot which?
Yeah, around eighty-six, Armitage was, there were two boys playing at scooters, and it was getting dark in the winter, it gets dark, and, um, the parents pointed out to me how dark it was.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Anyone else? Okay, so now, is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board? Now it's open comment, yeah?
Hey, Tommy, at Pope Wayne Avenue. Michael, one's for you and one's for Keith, they're both short, but when you were doing your inventory of the historic house, it used to be, when we first put the house, you know, started with all the remodeling, we were back in the day, there was like this six-foot concrete cast bust on the front of the house, roughly where the swing is now. It was the coolest thing, and it was an original piece from the polo club. Why don't you guys put that back out? I mean, it, it was awesome.
I haven't uncovered that yet.
Oh, it's, it's huge. You know, it always reminds me of the, uh, you know, the Han Solo frozen in carbonate thing, but it's, it's a ladies, it's about this big, and you couldn't miss it, it's gigantic.
I don't know if it'd be in the basement, I'd have to, I'd have to.
Have to look for that.
Yeah, 'cause I haven't seen anything like that yet.
It, it was awesome, I just wonder where, you know, they should put that back out 'cause it's an original piece to the house. Unless, maybe it disappeared after all these years.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I haven't seen it, but the check probably might be down at Public Works, who knows, it could be stuffed in anywhere, we have a lot of properties.
Yeah, it was, you know where the, the swing, on the front porch swing is? It was against the wall right there originally.
Okay, well, look.
All right, cool, and then my second thing is super easy, but it's the thing, Keith, Keith, uh, they put the new fence on over at Nazo's, and when they put it up, there was, you could see through it, it was terrible, and only because you could see all our construction and stuff and stuff hidden back there, and I talked to Keith, and he had him put slats in it, and they finished, I think beginning of last week, but.
Yeah.
It's nice, it looks so nice now, that old wooden fence being gone and that nice chain link fence with the privacy slats in it, it, it really turned out nice, thanks for putting those up.
I'll pass it along, thanks.
Sorry, I asked at the senior center.
It's closed.
She reminded.
We got oxygen.
Keith, yeah, Keith, um, construction over senior center is done, when are we gonna talk about naming a, dedicating a room to Gina?
Uh, we've got that on the list for something we'll do in the near future.
Okay, you let me know? Awesome, thank you.
That's it? Yes, no? Finally?
Sorry, Mary, Kim Darlin, ten fifty-three Greenberg, can someone? Probably Doug. Doug, can you tell me what is happening with that Asian restaurant next to Schnitzelplatz? Somebody asked that.
Uh, it was purchased a while ago by, I'm not gonna tell you who, but it was purchased, and.
They were gonna tear that down, right, make a parking lot?
I don't know what they're gonna do, they haven't done anything with it yet, so, but it's been purchased.
So it's, it's, is it still gaining rats? Do we care?
Well, I mean, somebody owns a property and we can't make people build it.
Okay, so it's gonna sit there, right?
Till somebody decides to build it.
My count of barrels, obviously Glendale Heights, this one is for Mr. Doug Flint. The Bloomingdale Road construction over the CN Railroad System, we've talked about it before, I'm looking at some of my notes here and some of the funding from the county, they're gonna spend over, what, five point six million dollars, but it's over a two-year period. So my concern is the economic impact it's gonna, uh, have on Glendale Heights, and what is the plan about doing the construction? Is they're gonna have just two lanes and do one side, or what are they trying to do here?
Well, it's the county project, and it's pushed off to twenty twenty seven, the last I heard, because county's getting funding.
Right, I'm looking at it right here because I got the logistics of it, but it's showing me here twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six, that's why I was curious.
It's pushed back to twenty twenty seven, I think, the last message we got from county engineering.
Okay, is there a plan to divert traffic or to just work on the bridge, as I said, and just keep one side available?
Uh, I think we'll know that when the county comes up with their plan on how to fix it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Tika, come on.
Martika King, resident of Glendale Heights, counselor, and I have a constitution update. I went to the library and I spoke with Jackie, who's a manager there, and she said that we do have constitutional teaching in schools, at high school level, I think, so that's good. Do you understand me? Mary, you're looking at me, like you don't understand what I'm saying. Am I speaking too quickly? Anyway, um, second bit is I talked to the library director, Tom, and he liked the idea of having constitutions, free constitutions in the library, so he's ordering a hundred, and it's gonna be kinda combined with a local thing, I'm not quite sure what he's doing, but, you know, you guys that are running, you might think about talking to Tom, see how you might, you know, promote your agenda, you know, and educate, you know, about the, whatever, you can think of it. So that's it, thank you very much, God bless.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in fair?
Aye.
This meeting adjourned.